Sometimes our date nights for presbytery meetings, so.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular Pickwa City Commission meeting, Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. Will the clerk call the...
Do the pledge first?
I'm sorry, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, call the order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now will the clerk call the roll?
I shall. Mayor Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Grissom.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Foote.
I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Commissioner Foote this evening.
Move.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, no one opposed? He's excused. He is in Florida at this time. At this time, we'll next excuse the commission to go to executive session. I need a motion.
A motion for a commission to go to executive session?
I will second that.
All right, moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, at this time, we'll be in executive session. We are back on the record. We went into executive session to consider the purchase or sale of property for public purposes and to prepare for and review negotiations on compensation and other terms and conditions of employment for city personnel. And we are out of that session at this time. So, we'll proceed with the consent agenda.
The consent agenda tonight is one item, is the approval of the minutes from the February 18, 2020, regular Pickwa City Commission meeting.
I make a motion we approve our consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Next is new business. And clerk, read resolution number R-41-20.
A resolution requests an authorization to apply for safe route to school funding for certain infrastructure and non-infrastructure improvements.
Mr. Smeazing will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The Safe Routes to School program is a federal program that makes available funding to be able to make improvements, obviously, to enhance the routes to schools. The City of Pickwa team, the Safe Routes to School team, has been meeting over the past year, working with a consultant to update our school travel plan. You might recall in 2011, we last completed or put together a school travel plan document and subsequently applied for funds in 2012 and received funding and were able to do some things at that time. We haven't applied for the program since then. And talking with the school district, they actually reached out to us and said there are some needs at some of the school buildings. So, we began that effort, like I say, about a year ago. Through that work of the committee, which include representatives from the school district, City of Pickwa, and from the community at large, each of the school sites were evaluated and conditions were observed to identify what enhancements might be appropriate. And the school travel plan then makes those recommendations as to what ought to happen at those schools. The schools that are included in the document are the Washington Street Primary School, the Pickwa Central Intermediate School, and the Pickwa Junior High School are the three locations where there are recommendations for improvements to enhance the safe passage of students to those schools. What's being requested, if the application is submitted, would be for funding in the amount of $222,304. The program provides 100% funding, so there is no expense to the locality. And the $222,304 would provide funds primarily for school zone signage, some sidewalk improvements, crosswalk repainting. There's also some pavement markings and bike racks, things of that variety. So, that's the nature of this request. There is an application deadline coming up at the end of the week. So, we're at the 11th hour, so to speak. This only requires one reading to be able to authorize. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
The only comment I have is I'm really glad that we are looking at the reconfiguring of that intersection at Indian Trail and Tomahawk Trail. It is just a hot mess. And I have been through that intersection numerous times, so I'm glad to know that we're looking at that because with student drivers and just coming through there with the high school and junior high kind of moving in at the same time, I think that's a good thing, so.
I agree.
I was just amazed, looking at it, it's an interesting read. And how many people live within a walkable distance and within one to two miles, even a half mile, quarter of a mile? There's decent amount. So, I think it's great for kids and exercise. I'm pretty sure I remember reading where the parents were involved as well, too, asking what some of their concerns were. So, there was some input, too, just because I know there'd be a lot of parental concerns. So, I think it's a great thing.
Pickwa Catholic not considered for, either of their locations not considered for any of this?
They're engaged in the conversation. The challenge becomes the criteria of the ODOT criteria that apply to the program make it difficult for them to participate.
I know that many of the parents were surveyed. There was a survey conducted in the spring of 2019. It provides good information on parent attitudes and behaviors. For example, parents of students who do not currently allow their children to walk or ride their bikes to school cited the following reasons: the distance to the school, speed of the traffic along the routes, time, safety at the intersections and crossings, weather or climate, violence and/or crime in the areas. So, I think that the findings of the parents is critical, but it's also good that we are conducting this survey and that there is money available that we can improve the condition. Thank you.
Any further comments from the commission? No? Any comments from the public?
Yeah, my name is Bill Chockwell, live at 607 North Sunset Drive. And first of all, I kind of want to apologize to all of you. Last week, or last commission meeting, I probably was ignorant and arrogant that I acted like I should, you should know what was on the packet and you didn't know the pricing, so that, I apologize for that. But I want to specifically refer to this, but I'd just like to say real quick that my daughter told me where this packet was at, and I don't know where the camera is at in here, but if you'd look at that camera and tell the rest of Pickwa that this packet, they could follow right along at home with what you guys are doing and probably your citizen participation would greatly increase. So, what I want to specifically ask about is this part right here. And it's not, it's not on a page. And, but it talks about, there were 54 total pedestrian bicycle crashes within the Washington Primary School non-transport radius. So, my comment about that is I don't have any kids going to the school. I have grandparents, so nobody interviewed me. But I live catty-cornered across from Washington Township School. I've watched kids get hit, and it's a danger zone. And the only place I can think of any worse for anybody in the City of Pickwa to walk is downtown Pickwa in the pedestrian. And it's a, you know, people fly up and down Sunset. You know, sometimes I'll pull out of my driveway to go to work at Commerce, and I'll get people just fly by me going 50, 60 miles an hour just so they can get to Commerce and turn, you know, they're late to work. And then you got all these kids running out in there, and it's just, it's a, you know. So, I'm not sure exactly how to, you know, what you guys can do to address that, but I'm telling you that is dangerous and I'm surprised that more, I've watched young kids get hit there. So, anyhow, hopefully this is resolved.
I appreciate it, seriously.
Thank you.
We'll pass that on to the chief.
I'll be back 922-921 camp. I want to follow up with that. I think I came to a commission meeting a year or so ago at the four-way stop there. The best thing for there would be a stoplight because people there think just because they're somewhere near it, it's their turn to go. I've seen it and seen it and seen it. If you can't put a light there, then have a policeman stationed there at all times. Because I see it all the time, because that's pretty much the route I take all the time, and that's what I see. I mean, people don't care who's in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
What intersection was that? I didn't hear you.
Sunset and Park, Mark Appleton, four-way, right at the school.
Aye.
Any further comment? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-41-20.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion pass. Next is resolution number R-42-20.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate.
Mr. Smeazing.
Thank you. This item's incidental to the property located at the corner of Spring and High Street, where the property owner desires to sell their property. The existing building and parking lot improvements located on the property encroach into the abutting former canal land, which is currently owned by the City of Pickwa. The public records indicate that the existing non-conforming use of the premise and the subject buildings and the parking lot improvements and building encroachments have existed at this location since at least 1945. The prospective buyer plans to make a substantial investment in renovating the building and will transform the existing improvements into a modern facility with a major investment. And the occupancy of the premise will conform with the applicable zoning standards for that district and also align with the city planning documents, the different visioning documents that have been completed for the downtown area and the placemaking initiative. As part of facilitating the transaction to accommodate this small business development activity, the city would be completing the survey work to prepare a legal description for the track of canal land that we would be conveying. And we have had conversations with ODNR, with whom we hold an agreement as it relates to land that was previously in the canal right of way, and they have consented to the terms of this transaction, which would basically allow us to convey this property to the prospective buyer to facilitate their interest in the property.
Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any.
Nope. No? Any questions from the citizens?
Nope.
Then I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion we approve resolution number R-42-20.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-43-20.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of real estate into the land reutilization program.
Mr. Smeazing.
Thank you. This item pertains to five properties, which have been identified as nonproductive land. That essentially means that the properties have significant delinquent taxes and are currently vacant and effectively abandoned by the previous ownership interest. The land reutilization program, as you'll recall from me mentioning in previous conversations, is a mechanism for the county to be able to foreclose upon the nonproductive properties and convey them to the electing subdivision, i.e. the city. In doing so, that allows for us to be able to facilitate putting the properties back into productive use by collaborating with the Pickwa Improvement Corporation, who can in turn work with the adjoining property owners to be able to restore these properties to productive use. If the commission chooses to authorize this resolution, this would allow us to initiate the process with the county to proceed with the foreclosure for the city to be able to receive the properties and facilitate that process.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I have none.
None? Any questions from citizens?
Joe Drapp, 1366 Park Avenue, are those properties scattered about?
Do you want to list them?
They are. So, there's five properties, as mentioned, as indicated in the resolution. They are located at 823 Broadway, which is the corner of Broadway and Camp Street. It's where a house was previously demolished, I believe, as part of the neighborhood stabilization program back in the early 2000s. 428 South Main Street is a vacant parcel. It's between Johnston Street and South Street on South Main. 535 South Main Street, again, is a vacant parcel. This one, too, I think, was a home that had been demolished as part of the neighborhood stabilization program. This is in that same block on the east side closure to South Street. 514 Spring Street is located between North and Green on the west side of the street and backs up to the Canal Place parking lot. It's adjacent to a little specialty retail shop there, and the neighbor has mowed the lawn since, ever since the building was demolished. And then 529 West Water Street, this is across the alley from Mark's White's Heating and Cooling on Water Street between Roosevelt and Franklin.
So, those five properties, or at least four of them, would be in a, what we would consider a high probability of redeveloping those properties? Were you buying those for us or for, to sell those properties to individuals?
In this case, we're facilitating the conveyance of the properties to an entity that would put them into productive use, meaning they'll maintain the property and they'll pay the taxes. So, the school district won't be out the property taxes that currently are not being paid. None of them are terribly attractive for redevelopment purposes. They're more so, they're side lots for adjoining property owners who have been mowing them for a number of years already.
Yeah, I was thinking about, that they were all structures that could come down, but I was, we're essentially, this is almost a pass-through for us on some of those properties?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great question. No other questions from the citizens?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-43-20.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion pass. Next one is resolution number R-44-20.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of two acres of land from parcel number M40-003100.
We have been in discussions with Kettering Health Network about locating their med-flight operation to the Pickwa Municipal Airport. This would be a 24/7 regional emergency operation facility that they would operate out of in order for flights and so forth, serving probably about a five-county region. And in order to make this possible, we need to purchase two acres of land adjacent to the airport. The price on the property, which is controlled by US Bank for the Hartzell Trust, the price on the property is $35,000 an acre. Looking up what the property was purchased for originally was over $44,000 an acre. So, we think this would be tremendously beneficial to our community and also surrounding communities to have med-flight located right here in Pickwa.
Any comments from commissioners?
So, we would lease that property, then?
We would lease that to Kettering, and they would develop all the facilities, yes.
They'd build all the structures and everything they need?
That's correct.
And then we would retain it afterwards, since we own the property?
That's correct.
Any questions from citizens?
Yeah, Bill Chockwell, 607 North Sunset Drive. So, you're going to lease it to them for how much a month?
We're still negotiating that.
Is it going to be like the airport, a dollar a year, something like that?
We haven't got there yet with the negotiations.
But we're going to assume for the moment this is going to be nowhere near we're ever going to recover that money.
I think the important thing is to remember of the service that will be provided to the community and how worthwhile it is to have that facility there, no matter what the price is.
Well, I'm just kind of, just a little concerned. But I mean, last week, you guys are talking about, you know, eminent domain, somebody's property, because you don't want to pay the price, and all of a sudden, here's somebody with, you know, and I like the Hartzells, and they're a good family in the City of Pickwa. And so, I'm certainly not complaining that they're going to get $70,000 for a couple acres out in the country. And I'm not sure where you got your figure that those acres were worth at some time, $44,000, but...
From the auditor's site.
So, then my question is, I'm still kind of, why are we buying that ground? Why is the City of Pickwa buying that ground?
Because we need to control the property for future growth.
So, we need to spend $70,000 of our money to build a helicopter pad for the new hospital?
We won't be building it, it will be built by Kettering.
Well, we're going to invest $70,000, I mean, why don't they buy the property? Or why don't we make some deal with them? Why don't you do what the other hospital did and, you know, let them, you know, some sort of a partnership, let the hospital pay for it?
The deal couldn't be worked that way, we had to work at how it was feasible.
Well, send Chris out there, offer him 45.
Why would we offer him 45?
We're getting it for 35.
Like I said, you got, I have heard you guys, I have heard you guys on multiple occasions yelling, screaming about people paying $35,000 an acre. Nobody will come here because ground is $35,000 an acre. And here you, the drop of a hat, is going to spend $35,000 an acre like it's free money. And I just don't, I just would like somebody to explain to me, why are we buying property for a very wealthy hospital that is, that needs a helicopter pad? Why don't they pay for it themselves? Or why don't you cut some deal with them and, you know, do some public-private partnership? And I don't know why you have to use our money. It doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the citizens? I'll take a motion, then.
I move that we adopt resolution number R-45-20.
Second.
44-20, I'm sorry.
44-20.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the final resolution, number R-45-20.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Workers, Inc., AFSCME, Council 8, Local 984.
Ms. Bogan?
The AFSCME contract represents our blue collar and clerical unit employees. This resolution will replace the AFSCME collective bargaining agreement, which expired on 12/31/2019. The new collective bargaining agreement will be in effect until 12/31/2022.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the citizens? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number R-45-20.
I second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the public comment section. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission regarding agenda items, issues, or to provide information, comments, or requests. It to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager's office.
Bill Chockwell, 607 North Sunset Drive. And I want to take this opportunity to thank you and Commissioner Grissom. You guys have worked really hard on two projects that, the town hall meeting thing that happened for the electric, people are upset about the electric and the pool. And I just, I just think you guys should be really commended for the fact that you're engaging the community. And I'm just surprised every day about, you know, people are coming in and signing my petition, and these people are registered voters, they're your registered voters, not mine. And it's just, it's just amazing how much, number one, I can tell you unequivocally that everybody likes you and everybody's rooting for you, but they still want to vote for their own mayor.
And they're more than welcome, too. And that's what happens, I have no problem with that.
Okay, and then I think I also should tell you at this point that I will keep you guys informed as to how well I'm doing with my petitions. And at this point, it's so-so. And if I don't have them completed by the end of April, I will drop this endeavor because it's, you know, it's not fair to drag it on for all involved. But you should also be aware that these things take off. And if it does take off, I wrote this resolution or this petition so that if it did happen, you're going to be the guy implementing it, unless you resign, you know? And so, so if it would happen in November, I gave a year's space, you'll still be mayor during that interim period and also for the, you know, till 2022. And so, you're going to have a lot of responsibility. So, I would, I would suggest to you that last time Gary was involved in this, when he found out that it was going to pass, he left and came to Pickwa, and it left the mayor in Fishers with a lot of responsibility.
You sure that's what, I don't know if that's what happened, but...
Gary, is that what happened?
No, that's not what happened.
Okay, what happened?
They didn't put it on the ballot till two years after I was gone.
Yeah, but you knew what they were doing. According to them, you knew what was going on.
I did not know exactly what they were doing at all. I left for different reasons other than that.
Well, that's not what they say, but it doesn't make any difference, that's not my point.
Well, just to, just to clarify, I mean, what who said?
I've gotten my research by, I called the mayor's office over there, I've done it twice, and they have several people call me back. And I have talked to their human resource department, I have talked to the local media over there, I have talked to the mayor's office over there, and the story has been consistent every time.
Well, I saw that you said you talked to the director of human resources, but I know him personally, and he worked for me when I was there.
He's not the same guy, it's a different person.
No, it's the same person. And he says he's never heard of you or never talked to you.
Well, so are you telling me I'm lying?
No, I'm just saying what the person told me.
I would suggest, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to get off of that point. I'm going to say to you that what you should do in your own interest is that if Gary, if, I mean, it's right now, it would just take three of you, this guy, three of you to say, let's put this on the ballot, he will be gone tomorrow. He's already told you he's not going to work under you. And so, that's fine, but I'm just giving you the heads up.
I didn't say I wasn't going to work under Chris, I said I don't work in a statutory city.
Well, that's what will happen. Whoever the mayor would be, you will work for them.
But I like Gary.
Well, that's okay. But it's...
I don't want him to go, he's done a great job.
Well, but that's fine, and I think that's great, that's up to you, that's up to you guys. I'm telling you the situation is going to, if the citizens of this town decide so, then you are going to be his boss. That's how it works.
I understand that, I do, I do.
You know, and so, I'm just giving you the heads up.
And I appreciate you giving us updates as to how your petition, things going, I appreciate that.
And then I just, that's really all I have to say.
And, no, well, and thank you for commending us, because we want citizen input. We want your input, we want everybody's input. That's why we are tackling the pool issue, that's why we talked about the utilities. Chris and I talked about, but all of us talked about it, seriously, we all want, I mean, this is everybody's city, and to hear from people, from the citizens, that is one of the best things. And to hear from you, I mean, even when you ask questions, because you just want clarification. I have no problem with that. Keep doing that.
Well, I appreciate that, I'm just trying to get the point across to you two that I'm telling you, I mean, I'm sitting down talking to the people that are voting for you guys, and they are really interested in our town. They're not the kind of people that are going to come up here and...
They want to say.
But they, they want their voice heard, so...
Sure, and we're trying to do that.
And you're doing a great job of it, so...
Well, thank you. All right.
Good evening, I'm Amy Hickey, 1335 Covington Avenue. I'm here today to present a youth group, Aiming High with Youth, the Riffle Effect. To give you a little bit of background on myself, first, I have 20-plus years of working with youth in Miami County, throughout Miami County. Currently, I am a driving instructor with AAA Driving School. I have worked with disabled individuals through capabilities, connecting the dots. And I also worked with Jump of Ohio, Inc., Miami County Youth Program. So, I have, working with youth is my passion. Watching them thrive and grow and towards their ultimate life goals is amazing. So, Aiming High with Youth, my projected vision for this group is I would like to target bullied youth. I feel that there's a big need for that all over. You know, build their self-worth, their self-esteem, you know? Let them know that they're not alone, that we do care for them. So, some of my visions, this is all a work in progress. Some of my visions, it'd be open to school... Some of my, my visions, it'd be open to school age youth. Getting these youth involved with the community as much as possible. You know, coordinate a community cleanup, help citizens of Pickwa, helping them if they need help with yard work. You know, cleaning their homes, whatever, and getting involved with the animal shelter in Miami County. Also have group activities, you know, get them together as a group, help them find their passion, something that they're interested in, photography, cooking, drawing, you know, computers, whatever, you know, help them. And then, of course, have fun group activities, you know, fishing, bowling, nature walks, you know, things like that. Get them all together, together to, to work. Provide resources for, for the older youth to help find employment. You know, I would be looking for volunteer mentors from the city of Pickwa. We will be having fundraising events, starting here in the near future. We are putting together a poker run. I will be speaking with Wings and Rings about doing some fundraising with them as well. We're gonna be selling t-shirts and bracelets, and I know that there's a lot more fundraising things out there that we can do. So we will be looking into that. I would like to do a, a big kickoff in downtown Pickwa, like mid-June, to really introduce this to the city and, and draw the youth in for that. So Aiming High with Youth, the Riffle Effect, you might be asking, what, what's the Riffle Effect? What is that, what does that even mean? This is named after a dear friend of mine, you may know him, Tony Riffle. Unfortunately, he was so excited about helping me get this, this program, this group, up and running. Unfortunately, he passed away February seventeenth. So that's where the Riffle Effect comes in, because I want him to be a part of, of this group. So the mission statement for Aiming High with Youth, the Riffle Effect, is to empower and inspire youth to believe in their self-worth by achieving immediate positive and lasting changes, changes in their lives. So tonight, in, in conclusion, I welcome any feedback, guidance, ideas from the Pickwa community. I have contact information ready and available, so that's my group that I am...
All right.
Can I, I just wanna ask a, a question? Have, somebody who has a passion for youth and has worked with youth as well for many, many years, is this a program that is already out there? Or is this a program that you have created just from...
I am creating.
You're creating it, okay, so, so this is your program, Aiming High with Youth, and then obviously the Riffle Effect, okay.
Correct, yes.
All right.
Just, just from talking to some people in town, and one of them directly asked me, there's nothing for kids to do out there, this is perfect.
Right.
Perfect. And this is something that we can specifically identify and target, hey, there are things for kids to do out there.
Absolutely.
And there's a need for that, so you're gonna fulfill a need. Hit me up, I'll be glad to, to buy from Wings and Rings and get a t-shirt and whatnot.
Awesome.
I do have a motorcycle, but I'm not getting in any poker runs. I appreciate what you're trying to do, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you, thank you for your time.
And keep us posted, let us know.
Yeah, please do.
And if there's anything that we could do.
I do have, I'm getting a Facebook page together.
Good.
Instagram, 'cause you know, kids are all about social media.
Yeah, they are.
And everything, so, like I said, it's a work in progress, and I am extremely excited about this.
All right, keep it up.
Have you, have you gone to a school board meeting?
Yeah, that's...
I'd be important, you can go there and, and share it with the school board as well. I just think about bringing all the entities together in the city, so we know what's going on.
So when we talked, I told you, get hold of Dwayne, and, you know, the school would be, 'cause they have a program that they do already, but maybe you could join in forces with them, so I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
Cindy's got a...
I just wanted to know where you meet, where you all get together, and then how often?
I'm wanting to talk to Willman at the Bethany Center, and maybe see if we could, you know, maybe meet there. You know, and I'm also thinking, like, the weather's nice and stuff, the parks.
Okay.
You know, things like that, until we can maybe get a, a permanent location to call our own. You know, so that's where the fundraising and, and hopefully some donations and stuff will come into play.
Well, thank you for your passion, and we look forward to hearing more from you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thanks for loving our kids.
Good evening, I am Alicia Barton with the OSU Extension Office here in Miami County.
Where are you located at, in Troy?
We are at two oh one West Main Street, Troy.
We don't say that word in here.
Oh, I'm sorry, we are at two oh one West Main Street, city to the south.
Okay.
Miami County, but we do serve all of Miami County, no matter where we are located.
There you go, I like that, and it's Ohio State, so I'm not getting down there.
Exactly, go Bucks.
I'm Amy Shannon, I'm the social worker with Health Partners Free Clinic, and I am the chair for the Miami County Food and Security Committee.
And that is what we're here tonight to talk to you about, I am the advisor for the Miami County Food and Security Committee. We have been running these pop-up pantries once a month, starting in August of two thousand and nineteen. Our purpose in doing this is to provide food for local residents anywhere, anywhere in Miami County, just some surplus food. So this is after, we've been doing these toward the end of the month, so after, a lot of times, they've taken advantage of their pantry benefits. You may know that they can usually only benefit, visit a pantry once a month. And then usually at this time too, their SNAP Ed benefits have kind of run out or are a little bit short. So we have been looking to provide some supplemental food to get them till the end of the month. And we have had quite a bit of, had a much larger response than we anticipated. So we started this in August, and our first location was actually here in Pickwa at the First Put, First Choice Food Pantry over by the Even Flow area. And then we've been moving it around the county just to meet the needs of people as they, you know, have some transportation barriers and they're looking to acquire food. So just to give you our two thousand and nineteen numbers, and I'm, I'm gonna throw a lot of numbers at you, and I was sitting down there thinking, how do I put a face at this? 'Cause it's a lot of numbers. But I counted in the room, and in Miami County, we, according to Feeding America, looks at, the Miami County numbers are about one in every twelve people are food insecure. So if you count the people in this room, I'm not looking to cut anybody in half, but we're about two-point-six of the people in this room are food insecure, based on the statistics for our county. So in two thousand and nineteen, we had, like I said, five pop-up pantries, and we served eight-hundred-and-thirty-four households. And out of those eight-hundred-and-thirty-four households were two-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-four people that we provided food to. We kept that going, in January, we were at a location in Pickwa, again, same location. We actually had to call the police department that day because we backed up all the way to the main street and we're stopping traffic. We had people lining up about nine forty-five, ten o'clock, we started serving at noon. Our numbers for last month, we were in Troy, but we started a really neat system in last month, or, yeah, it is March. So in February, we started a really neat system where we were intaking people on a tablet, so that we were able to get some more specific information. We're really excited about the numbers that we're gonna be able to, or the, the statistics that we're gonna be able to see on our pop-up pantries with these tablets. But in the month of February, we had three-hundred-and-two households serving nine-hundred-and-twenty-three people, so you can see, yeah, we're, we're, it's growing quite a bit. Of those three-hundred-and-two households, a hundred-and-twenty-seven of them were Pickwa. So Pickwa alone made up forty-two percent of the households served at our food distribution.
And this was in Troy, so people came to Troy for this.
So we're here tonight just to make you aware of this problem. This is a very complex problem, food insecurity. It, you know, we can't solve it with, you know, raising minimum wage or reducing housing prices, it's not a one-sided issue. We have a food insecurity committee that we, that works to address this issue in the county. It's, has the health department, a lot of county entities that are on it. We invite you to join us in this, we also invite you to our pop-up pantries. We are continuing that once a month tradition, hopefully, we hope it continues. This month, we are in Pickwa, up at Upper Valley Career Center on the last Saturday of March. It takes a lot of volunteers to put food in people's cars. We, you know, to keep things moving along really quickly, we try to, you know, not have them get out of their cars. So someone comes up to the car, takes their information, and then, you know, they pull forward and someone, we have several people loading their cars so that they're not getting out, just to keep things moving. So, we did see a thirty-nine percent increase, by the way, just in the month of February. So this is, you know, we're, we know we're doing something right, but again, this isn't something that we can do alone, we need, we need you, especially forty-two percent of the people that we're seeing from Pickwa. We, we are just invited here tonight to invite you to join us in this.
I have a question, what kind of information do you gather?
So we're trying to remove as many barriers as we possibly can when we do these pop-up pantries, so we try to make it really quick. So they are just providing us with proof that they are a Miami County resident, whether that is a, a bill or a driver's license. We collect their name, their address, and how many people are in their household, because that determines how much food we give them.
And also, we're looking at ages, so we are collecting how many seniors and how many children are being served. The seniors number has been very concerning to me, we have a lot of seniors coming through.
What time is it on the twenty-eighth at Upper Valley?
Yeah, so Amy brought up the senior numbers of the nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven that were served in February. Twenty-two percent of them were seniors, and that is only counting sixty and older. So, yeah, our senior numbers have been growing quite, quite a bit. So we're getting, we're asking to see their ID just to prove that they're county residents, and then also their household size. And then they're just asked to, not to prove their income, but they read a statement just saying that they meet that income verification or that income requirement based on the, the size of their household. Our, our goal is to just, to give people to, food to people that are hungry, we wanna reduce as many barriers and whatever we can to get it into their hands, so it is a simpler process.
What is the funding source, I noticed Shared Harvest, what is the funding source, and how do you, I mean...
Great question, so our volunteers, obviously, we, you know, no funding there. Shared Harvest provides all of the food, and it is federally, it is food they get from the federal government. And so because of that, that is why we need that information, if it wasn't, you know, we could give it away. But they have reporting that they have to do on the food that they give away, so we take the minimum that they need for that reporting.
So the, so all the food comes from Shared Harvest?
Yes.
So that's where it's, with the funding, okay.
Yes, so we work with their distribution director, he comes down with the truck. And something that we started last month that was actually really, you know, you have to celebrate small victories and work like this, so last month, we were really excited. We did not give away all of our food, we had given all of our food away the last time we were in Pickon, we turned away about forty families, and that was before Thanksgiving, and it was a really hard day. And so in January, we said, bring us more food, forget sending that truck back empty, that is not what we want to happen. And we've worked out now, where no matter what is given away, the food goes into a local food pantry, so it does not leave our county. We've been able to serve everyone the last two months, and then provide more food to our food pantries.
That's awesome, thank you.
And we're also very focused on fresh foods, so we're doing a lot of vegetables, frozen chickens this last time, so we're trying to give people some healthy foods versus just all the canned and, and dry products.
Sounds great.
And you also share recipes too, because sometimes people, having lived somewhere where we ran a food bank, and we had people coming to get things like frozen turkeys, in their, in their country, they didn't cook frozen turkeys. We had to give them recipes to be able to fix what we were giving them. So I think that's important, 'cause sometimes you think about what you're giving people may not be something they're used to fixing, so...
You are correct, we do that too, we tell, we're gonna give you an eggplant and tell you what to do with it.
Exactly, yeah.
And we also have a citizen who has started an initiative to drive seniors to this program that don't have transportation of their own. The first month that she did it, she had twelve, the second month, she had thirty-four. So she's recruiting volunteers to help her drive, to bring all these seniors to the program too.
Well, and you bring up a whole nother issue, which is a whole, I mean, transportation in our county, we have got to work on. And it's, I know there are people working on it, but it needs to get better, so...
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else, any other citizen input?
Hello, my name's Debbie Thompson at ten twenty-six South Roosevelt Avenue. And I'm here about the mayorship, not personal, but, Kazzy, I wanna thank you for everything you've done for our town. I, your enthusiasm is, is, you know, very contagious. And Chris, it's nothing against you.
No.
I've known you for forty years now, you know that?
You have, huh? Yes, you have.
But I had Matt Harris for government teacher in high school, who not only taught us the importance of voting, not as much as it was a privilege even, but a duty. And I truly want to vote for my mayor. And I just wish you guys would reconsider that change that you made in the charter of how we're picking mayor. I don't think we should think that the citizenry is too ignorant to figure out how to pick a mayor. And I don't know if that thing that with Martin only happened that one time, or did he run unopposed?
It happened actually a couple times where...
And did he run unopposed that year, or...
Well, it happened a couple times, commissioners would run.
Yeah.
And some people would vote for him for commission and not for mayor, and they didn't make the commission.
Right.
And so they, so, the idea behind the change was, is we want the commissioners on there, and then can you elect, the mayor's a figure essentially in our town anyhow.
But couldn't that just be like a default thing, if that situation happened?
I mean...
But allow the citizenry to pick their, their mayor?
You certainly can change the charter, it's permissible. That's one of the nice things about a charter is, is you can change it, and if that were the will of the commission, and we have charter review commissions that meet, usually they're supposed to meet every ten years, and I think there's one coming due soon. Certainly an issue they can address. And, I mean, there's, there's ways to handle it, it doesn't have to, I mean, you could do all sorts of things, there, it doesn't have to be a... Go back to the old system, you could go into other situations. And just to clarify, all the commissioners are Gary's boss, and so that's one thing...
I have nothing against Gary, it's not, it's none of that.
It's not a one-person, it's not a one-person thing, we're in a statutory city, it is. In this case, all the commissioners decide whether or not Gary's staying. But to your point, the, you could change the charter, if that's the desire of everybody, to change it so that a mayor could be elected.
Yeah, it, it used to be that way.
Yeah.
Because I remember, I always remind my parents, you know, you gotta vote for the mayor and the commissioner. So I, I think people did understand that.
It happened, I think, twice within the last twenty years, where a person ran for mayor, and they won the, they didn't, they won the mayor's spot, but not the commissioner's spot.
Yes, but that's only two times, but, you know what I'm saying? It seems like that could just be a default method, that if it happened, then they could pick the mayor amongst themselves. But I think that it would be nice if the public could vote for their own mayor again. And it's nothing personal, I just, I, I don't think we should take that right from the citizenry, is all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from, any other citizens?
Jay Roman, four oh six West High. Couple things, first and foremost, I would like to echo the importance of Amy Hickey and her project. I actually met with her about a month ago on this, and she's very, very passionate about it. It's something I think that really needs to happen around town, so any help that we can give her, I would like to echo the sentiment, and I'm definitely gonna do anything I can for that. Bill kinda stole my thunder a little bit, because I wanted to say that I really enjoyed the pool meeting. And again, I don't swim, so I had no dog in, in the race, but I, I feel like what we did as a community last Thursday is something we should strive to do. And what I, what I mean by the thing that we did was the, the town hall meeting type atmosphere. We should strive to do that once every three months on some type of subject. I feel that it went, a lot of the things that come across my board is people feel like they're not being talked to. And Bill's one-hundred percent correct, some people just aren't made to come up in this type of a situation and talk. It's easy for me, it's what I do. It's easy for other people, 'cause they just don't get nervous, but some people are deathly afraid to come up here, 'cause it's a public speaking thing, which is understandable. Especially when there's a camera on you, and someone like me publishes all the videos, everybody can see, and so do you, you know, it can be a little bit nerve-wracking. But on Thursday, when the cameras are off and everybody was here talking, it was an open atmosphere. And, I mean, there was a lot of, there for a while, there was a lot of people being heated, but the heat never explode, exploded in here, just stayed heated. We talked about it, we worked it out, then we got to the next step, over and over and over again. And it went very well, in my opinion, and I remember at one point, I'm sitting here looking around, and everyone is happy at the end of this. Everybody feels like they got their voice heard, you guys feel like you got somewhere, and so do the people. And it went very well, in my opinion. And I remember at one point, I'm sitting here looking around and everyone is happy at the end of this. Everybody feels like they got their voice heard. You guys feel like you got somewhere. And so, did the people. Why can't we do that more often? And I don't mean that sarcastic. I, I really do think we should strive to do something like that at least once every three months, some type of town hall. And, uh, actually, when it comes to, to, to Bill's proposal and the change and, and anything like that, we should have a town hall about that. Not saying you guys pick aside, but present the venue for people to come in and hear about it. Or the issue of the mayor, you know, if it really is something that's, and yes, I know Frank is right. The mayor is a figurehead position. But, Kazzy, did you go and represent the city of Pequah to some places? Yes. Chris, you've already done it. So, even though it is a figurehead, the mayor still represents the town. Figurehead or not, no power or not, it doesn't matter. You still go and you represent this.
Figurehead, I mean, that, that's exactly what they do is they go out and they, they're really, they are the face of the city along with the city manager.
Exactly. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think you did mean anything negative.
I didn't mean anything negative.
Yeah, right, right, right. And I wasn't trying to imply that by any means. But, I definitely think that, uh, if that is the purpose, that is the sole purpose of the mayor, then people should have the ability to choose that. But, that's something we could talk about in a town hall type atmosphere. I think a lot of the issues of communication would be solved with that, you know, pick one thing, three months from now, that's, or you, or every month, whatever you guys wanted to do, really. And, and, and go with that. And if you guys show up and nobody shows up on the subject, no harm, no foul. You just go home. Um, but at least give the opportunity. Um, I think it would really help. And again, I enjoyed it immensely. Uh, it was real fun. And, uh, it's rare for me to say because I wasn't even sure I was gonna come because I don't swim. But, I had a great time. And I feel like we really got somewhere. So, on that, thank you very much.
I've got a question for you. I've seen, uh, like, so, a lot of people comment too when it comes to, because I did think it was very productive. We had a good turnout. Um, some of the comments too are timing. A lot of people can't make it. They work certain things. Did you get any kind of responses back to say what would be, uh, six at night tend to work well or, um, because the whole point is to get people out?
Some people, didn't you have some people say that second shift, they work second shift jobs?
The second shift excuse is something I've always dealt with.
You don't like?
I, I, that irritates me personally.
I know.
Many different levels. But, that is something that people have said, uh, and it is a valid excuse.
I was just curious, were you doing two of them during the day, two of them in the evening or?
Sure. Or, I mean, even, I don't know what the possibilities are on weekends either. I think weekends would probably be a little bit more successful because I think, uh, six o'clock at night, even right now, I'm sitting here thinking like, oh, seven-thirty, I gotta be a, bed in an hour. You know, if you were to do something like that, say, Sunday, boom, two o'clock in the afternoon, or Saturday, two o'clock in the afternoon, you know, anybody that works a regular, you know, job could come in.
Did you like, uh, being in this loca- location? Because I know, uh, Kazzy really tried to do, uh, walks with the mayor in the districts and wards and stuff where things were happening. And the turnout wasn't the greatest here. And some of those were on the weekends and such too. So, I'm just trying to find a good venue that would for people.
I think this, I think this is a good spot. This is good enough. It's centralized. Um, I don't know as far as the map goes, but this is where everybody usually downtown area. It's right here. It's easy to point to. Everyone knows where it is.
Yep.
You know, and I even thought about coming to the Walk of the Mayor things before. And I was like, I have no idea where they're starting off, so I'm not even gonna bother. Not saying that you chose the wrong spot. That's just, was just why I didn't come, you know? But, so, if you just say, this is the spot where you do it, everyone already knows where it is.
Okay.
So, I, I think that would be the case. But, you're one hundred percent correct. There is a lot of people. I do get a lot of messages that you don't see.
Because you can hear the voice of everybody, not just.
Right. And they do say, I can't make it because of this or this or this. And a lot of people have kids. They have to get to school the next day. If you were to do it on a weekend, I think it would, it would be beneficial.
And we do want to reach out to everybody, so.
Yeah, for sure.
And we appreciate what you have to say. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else? Public comment? No? And I have the city managers report then.
I'm gonna ask Chris Smeating to give an update on economic development tonight.
Thanks, Gary. Uh, so, this is a, a high-level summary of, uh, some of the different things that have been, uh, we've been working on over the past month or two. Uh, and there, there's been a couple of requests for, for updates like this. Uh, so, I'll kind of hit on the seven different areas where we focus, um, and just share with you some of the, the conversations or activities that have been happening in those areas. Uh, first off, on the business retention and expansion side, uh, clearly, at the end of, uh, last year, the IDC Spring Project started. Um, that's a two-point-four million dollar investment, uh, on their behalf, an eighteen thousand square foot expansion, uh, with job creation obviously involved as well. Uh, more recently, we received an application from Infinity Fasteners, uh, for a two thou- two-hundred thousand, um, dollar investment, a four thousand square foot expansion, uh, that's out on Fox Drive. Uh, there are, uh, nine other, or at least nine other, uh, industries, uh, who have projects in the pipeline, uh, things that I can't necessarily discuss here. But, I, I, I'm excited to share with you that they're significant, uh, expansion projects if they choose to move forward. And we're working actively with them to, uh, to encourage that. On the real estate and, uh, development and reuse side, uh, we had a good conversation, uh, just last week with, uh, the realtor who's been picked by the new ownership interest of the Miami Valley Center Mall, uh, to work on trying to reactivate the mall space. Uh, and they're very much interested in reorienting the, um, focus of the mall to, to make it more of an entertainment destination. Um, and they're also looking at other, uh, creative, um, outside-the-box type of applications that could be useful there. Uh, they're also very interested in, in restaurants, uh, trying to attract some of the, um, name-brand, uh, restaurant entities that, that we all know and desire. So, it was an encouraging conversation. Um, so, it's probably the best news I've heard from, from the new ownership group since, since they've taken control. Uh, you may have noticed at Ash and Leaning Road, the Marathon Service Station, uh, they've scraped that to the ground. Uh, the owner of the property has decided to rebuild. Uh, it'll be a new sixty-five hundred square foot facility. That, here again, is a one-point-two million dollar investment. The Wood Street Lost Project, the permit applications came in this, uh, past week. That's a six-point-five million dollar, uh, project that'll, uh, get underway here sometime in March. Uh, that's fifty-two units of workforce housing. Uh, we continue to work with the developer who's interested in doing the Lock Nine Town Homes. Uh, those will be, uh, three-story walk-up type units overlooking the park space in the riverfront area. Uh, again, that will be a, a significant investment. I don't have a, a good number to share with you at this point, but it's, uh, it's a multi-million dollar project. The Zolo Lofts and Market, uh, Concept, uh, that project is, uh, anticipating historic tax credit allocations to be received in August of this year. Uh, so, once the historic tax credit allocation has been received, they're prepared to move forward with the actual, uh, construction activity. So, uh, with any luck, that project will be underway yet this year as well. Indian Ridge Subdivision, uh, as you know, there was a new section that was just constructed, uh, this past year. Um, and they've, uh, since began pulling permits to build new, uh, single-family residence there. Uh, the permit activity has been pretty robust, uh, since they've gotten the street, uh, infrastructure in the ground. Uh, so, we're seeing really good things happening in the Indian Ridge area. Uh, there's, uh, again, things in the pipeline that, uh, we, we can't share names, but there are six different entities who are, um, discussing various projects with, who are actively planning, um, site redevelopment or development or building revitalization type projects, uh, that would also fall into this, this category. Uh, business attraction and site selection discussions, um, of course, this goes back to last year, but it'd be remiss if I didn't point out the Kettering Health Network Project that's underway at the interstate. Uh, that's, I believe, a thirty-five million dollar project with seven, approximately seventy new jobs, uh, very good, very high-paying jobs. Um, and, uh, just this week, uh, yesterday, so this is, yesterday, we got word from the building owner who bought the fourteen oh one Innovation Parkway Structure, which is the for, uh, former Tocata Building. Uh, they signed a lease with Brown West Logistics, uh, who will be occupying that structure. Um, they will, uh, fully occupy the building and they'll have, uh, seven, uh, logistics associates who will, uh, be employed there initially. Uh, and they're, uh, they've got a, uh, long-term lease with a, an entity who they're providing distribution services for. Interestingly, on that one, um, the activity started off rather slow. And then, uh, here within the past month, we had, uh, four different entities who we were able to take to the, uh, property owner, uh, and several others who the property owner shared with me who also approached them. Um, so, the lead activity on that building, uh, really, uh, took off in the past month. So, there were no less than six, I believe maybe seven different entities that had expressed sincere interest in that property, so much so that, uh, we're now talking with the property owner. He owns, uh, an additional five acres to the end of Innovation Parkway. Uh, and we're encouraging him, working on how we might be able to partner with them to do a, a spec building, uh, to be able to have that warehouse space and, um, that kind of, uh, uh, facility available for our businesses as they're looking for, for options. So, that's good news. Uh, we also, as you heard mentioned previously, we, uh, participated in January in the Site Ohio Mock Site Visit Exercise. Uh, so, that gave us an opportunity to, to really, uh, work one-on-one with a site selection consultant, uh, and to, uh, share with them some of the, what we believe to be opportunities for uh, site development in the community and hear directly from them what they're, what they're looking for when they're engaging with communities and working with their, uh, clients who are looking for sites all across the nation. Uh, that particular exercise, we focused on the Scarborough Drive, uh, area because it's a listed property. We have a known sale price. We have a, uh, an, a property owner interest who's, um, interested in developing the land. Uh, and it was, uh, looked upon very favorably by the, uh, site selection consultant who we were, uh, conversing with. And they, they said nothing but very good things. And as we've reported here before, they're very, uh, impressed, uh, with what we've done to put into place a, uh, pretty robust infrastructure system that, uh, bodes well for a community when you're, when you're trying to get to that shortlist, when you're, uh, responding to those RFIs for site selection visits. And, uh, so, I'm excited by that. We're also working with, uh, other property owners who, who, um, hold the land that, um, one would per- perceive as developable. But, because we haven't had control or options on it in the past, uh, that's really a non-starter when you're talking about the site selection process and RFIs that we receive. Uh, so, we're, we're engaging those folks in those conversations and, um, hopefully, we'll make some inroads and uh, be able to do some of the due diligence necessary to really position those properties to be viable options when we get those kind of inquiries. Uh, we also, uh, just this, uh, past week, uh, attended the Jobs Ohio, Ohio Site Inventory Program kickoff meeting. And this is a really good thing that the state's doing. Uh, they've been listening to what the different, uh, localities are telling them and, and, um, they're, they're beginning to understand that, uh, they need to do more to support, uh, our efforts to make these sites ready for development. Uh, so, they put together a program where in the next five years, each year, they're allocating fifty million dollars. Um, it's a competitive, uh, funding source. But, the, the goal is to help communities be able to position these properties for development activity by doing some of the due diligence and some of those things necessary to, to put them in that position. Uh, so, we're very excited by what the state's doing there. In the entrepreneurial and small business development side, uh, as you know from Gary's updates, we, we, uh, have had a number of businesses, uh, do ribbon cuttings in the past month or so. Uh, Bradley and Ally at CPA Accounting Firm downtown, Pequah Spa, uh, EDC, the Employee Direct Care up on Sunset Drive in the building that Tom Baker and, uh, his family have revitalized and it looks so good. Uh, Queen Exhibits up on Commerce Drive, a business that started off in their home and are now growing to where they needed a bigger space and, and the space they're in, they've, they're filling it up. Uh, so, it won't be long and they'll be looking for something bigger. Uh, and then Brightview, uh, Treatment Center and Sunrise Treatment Center both are on the verge of, uh, taking occupancy of their facilities if they have not already. Uh, other exciting news in this, this category, uh, we heard from Edison State Community College. They run the Business and Industry Center out of Edison, which is a, a tremendous asset for us to have in our community, uh, but it serves our entire region so well. Uh, but the good news there was that, uh, they had, already had a partnership with the SBDC, uh, for the services they provide. Uh, but it was a kind of a once-a-week, uh, appointment-only type deal. Uh, SBDC realized that there was enough interest and activity here that they've decided to, to take up a permanent presence, uh, at Edison as part of the SBDC, uh, being there. So, that's very good news. Uh, and then again, in the entrepreneurial, small business development category, there are, uh, six projects that I would describe as being in the pipeline where we're having active discussion, discussions, uh, with folks that are looking to do some things. On the workforce development and talent attraction side, uh, the Upper Valley Career Center, school to apprenticeship and adult education programs, uh, along with the Edison State Community, uh, College Apprenticeships, Work-Based Learning and Industry Partnership Programs, uh, all continue to, uh, meet with tremendous success. Um, they're having, uh, very good results in working with our businesses and industries, uh, being able to place, um, uh, seniors who are in a trade skill, uh, program and they're, they're fitting them into a position that allows them to be able to hone their skills, uh, and learn the culture of that particular workplace, uh, so that upon graduation, they're ready to just start that job. Uh, and so, the businesses are excited. It's helping to fill their talent pipeline. Uh, and the, it's, it's very impressive to see, uh, the work that Upper Valley Career Center and, and the Community College are doing in terms of being responsive, uh, to our businesses' needs. Likewise, we had a, uh, roundtable discussion last week with Lieutenant Governor Husted, uh, that was hosted by Edison State Community College. Um, he was, uh, promoting the tech cred program that the state has put together. Mayor and I had the, uh, pleasure of, uh, participating in that. And, uh, again, I, uh, kudos to the state. There, there are some, um, some very useful programs that are coming out of the state right now, which is, uh, not always the case. But, I, I applaud the, the efforts. The tech cred program in particular, uh, is a, a means for our businesses who have, uh, employees that, um, you know, maybe they've worked on a particular piece of equipment over the years and, and the technology has evolved and new, new equipment's been implemented. So, they're, they, they might not have the technology skills necessary to be able to utilize that new piece of equipment. So, the employer can engage in the tech cred program through an entity like Edison State Community College and be able to, uh, send those individuals there. They can receive the training that they need to be well-versed on that technology. Uh, and then through the tech cred program with the state be reimbursed, uh, for, for the lion's share of that, uh, cost to train them. So, again, a very good initiative, uh, something very, very exciting. In the development, finance and incentives area, uh, of course, we just, uh, passed the, uh, TIF agreement at one of the most recent city commission meetings. Um, so, we're on our way now to, uh, facilitating the construction of the extension of Scarborough Drive, which will open up the ten acres that we have back there, uh, and make it accessible. That'll be approximately a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar public infrastructure improvement that will, uh, make that site, uh, available and ready, uh, for development interest. We also continue to engage on a, a fairly regular basis with the I-Pequah Investment, uh, Committee, uh, bringing to them prospective projects so that they can, um, uh, determine what their interests are and, and get a good sense of how I-Pequah might be able to assist them. I think we've had, uh, two, if not three, conversations over the past two months. Uh, we're also actively working on, uh, with the property owner's, uh, representative, uh, trying to position the old Starfire Fuel Station on County Road twenty-five A to be, uh, eligible to utilize the abandoned fuel station program, which is administered through the Ohio Department of Development Services Agency. Um, and we're also working with, uh, a group called the Op- Opportunity Zone Development Group, uh, in Columbus, um, to, to see what we can do, what kind of, uh, uh, programmatic, uh, tools we can come up with that would position, uh, better position our opportunity zone, uh, to facilitate small business activity and, and housing revitalization. So, that's something that, it's a trend that we're seeing across the nation in terms of what's actually happening with opportunity zones. And that's one of the ways that communities are, are successfully leveraging, uh, those, those designations. Uh, so, we're working with them. We've also been talking with, uh, Diperno Advisors. Um, it's a, uh, development finance consulting firm out of Dayton, uh, about the idea of, uh, establishing a downtown redevelopment district or a, a new community authority. Um, these are tools that the, the statutes, uh, make available to us to be able to, um, leverage the private sector investment that happens on properties like the Zolo Project, uh, to be able to bring, uh, some of the, the increase in valuation back to the, um, uh, to, to help offset the cost for the public improvements, parking lots, sidewalks, uh, public infrastructure that supports that investment activity. Uh, Lock Nine Park, uh, would also be a good example. Uh, you've heard me mention in the past Pace, uh, Property Assessed Clean Energy. Uh, we have, um, now have, uh, at least one, perhaps two, uh, entities that are looking to utilize the Pace financing mechanism, uh, which is the only thing that's been preventing us from bringing it forward. You have to have an actual project to be able to, um, at the legislative level, establish your energy special improvement district, the E-Sid. Um, so, now that we have, uh, uh, an, an entity that's ready to do a project, we can advance that legislation. So, you'll see more on that here very soon. Uh, but that will give us the opportunity to bring to bear a tool for our business and industry community, um, folks who are, are looking for that financing mechanism to be able to implement some of their, uh, sustainability initiatives and some of the things they'd like to be able to do at their, their place of business. We're also talking to the USDA about several programs that they make available that can, uh, be useful to our businesses, uh, and industries and also some of the, uh, community, uh, programs that they have. Real quick, also, we've talked to a couple of venture capital firms, uh, on the development finance side, uh, and had some conversations with the Dayton Port Authority who, uh, the, the Port Authority has their own funds, uh, that they can bring to bear to help with public financing, uh, in some instances of, of projects. Or, uh, working with our business, uh, or industries, uh, as we talk about some of those expansion projects. Sometimes the, the Port Authority can be a really good partner for, for those type of projects. So, uh, just making sure we build those relationships and understand what those opportunities are and they know who we are and we have that, that line of communication. Uh, finally, the last category, placemaking and, uh, urban revitalization. Um, we just completed our downtown building revitalization program, which, uh, infused three-hundred thousand dollars of CDBG dollars into our downtown building stock to help, uh, building owners, uh, upgrade their, their systems, do facade enhancements, uh, new roofs, things of that nature. Uh, so, it's going to extend the life of those facilities and, and make them, uh, more suitable for the occupancies that are happening there. Uh, we've talked a little bit this evening about the land utilization program. So, uh, it's taken far longer than it should have, but we've, we're now successful in, in putting the infrastructure in place to be able to utilize that tool. to be able to utilize that tool to help address some of the property, some of the issues we have with properties that are vacant and non-productive. And we need a path forward. And this could, I believe, be a very useful tool as we continue down that path. As part of our community development block grant funds this year, our allocation is directed towards what is described as a community-wide slum and blight removal program. So we'll have funds to be able to do about ten demolition projects of those properties that, again, are vacant or abandoned, they're blighting-influenced. There's no ownership interest who we can hold accountable, but we need to find a way to remove those properties. So that, that's a, that'll be a great thing as, as that moves forward. The Lock Nine Park Project, obviously, we've started down there. We're actively pursuing different grants and funding mechanisms. We've submitted our application for the state capital budget to try to secure a portion of funding through that. The Land and Water Conservation Fund, the Ohio Department of Development or Natural Resources has multiple programs. And there's a USDA program that could be a fit there as well. As well as always entertaining discussions with any private interests that are out there who, who see the value and the community benefit and, and would like to support that. We have the Code Picwu Project that continues to advance. That's updating our development standards so that they better reflect the character of the neighborhoods that they're defining in terms of the districts that are identified in the code. And then some other activities in this area over the past month or so. We were supportive of the HGTV video production. Thank you Natalie for your efforts there. We've also worked to heighten awareness on the census, the upcoming census on April first. We've put some poster boards out in some of the public institutions. We're actually talking with Lamar, the owner of a number of billboards. One in particular that's not very well-kept. We've asked them to better maintain it. By the way, if you need a temporary placeholder, there's a nice fact sheet about the census that you could put up there, so they may be willing to do that at no cost to the city. We're also, as mentioned earlier, working on the Safe Routes to School Initiative. We've updated the school travel plan. That's an ongoing process, maintaining the conversations with the school district. The, the funding request this evening doesn't fund everything that's in that document. So there could very well be a, a next cycle next year where we come back and look at some additional projects. Not long ago, we completed the kickoff of the Bring Your Green Program. So the Chamber of Commerce, Grow Picwu Now, and the City of Picwup joined forces to bring the Dayton Regional Green Initiative North to provide the, the Bring Your Green platform to our businesses and residents, anyone who would like to participate. It's really, initially, it was set up for businesses, businesses and industries. But as we talk to them about the, the opportunities, they recognize that it, that could very well be a platform for residences as well to be able to just input the facts you have in regards to your energy consumption and waste stream and be able to identify things that you could do differently to help reduce your energy costs and reduce your waste stream. So a number of our businesses have jumped on that. Our school district has been a huge champion for that program and utilized it in the past. So we're excited about that. And then likewise, we've had conversations with the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, the sustainability toolbox that they put together, which is really a list of best practices and things we're looking at in terms of how can we integrate that into our development standards and also our day-to-day activities that, in terms of the things we do here at the city. And then we continue to, to stay engaged in the Great Miami Riverway. The Riverway Summit is coming up here in April. And I know a large contingency from the city will be there. It's always a good event. But it's also, it's, 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 it's good stuff that they're doing in terms of promoting our region and the individual communities that make up the region in terms of what we have available for quality of life and, and the folks that, things that folks are looking for when they choose where to live and where to visit. And then finally, I'll mention the Jobs Ohio Economic Inclusion Program. This is a new program that we just learned about at the same meeting as the, the Ohio State, Ohio State Inventory Program or Site Inventory Program. And it, it stands to bring some resources to communities, especially smaller rural communities that relate to placemaking efforts and, and small business development activities. So again, staying plugged into those different agencies and, and the resources that they're bringing to bear and compliments to the state for some of the things that they're doing. So that's a, in a, in a nutshell, the things that have been happening the past two months, really. Happy to have provided you with the update. So thank you for the time.
That's a whole lot. Can you, can you put that on the, on the website? Do you guys have a website as well, a webpage? Because economic development updates people might look at. We can pass it around so people know you are very busy. You are very busy. And there is some economic development going on here. So go ahead.
I do have a statement regarding the coronavirus that I want to read tonight. The Picwu Health Department is monitoring the worldwide outbreak of the Novil coronavirus, which originated in Wuhan, China. The Centers for Disease Control is reporting a total of sixty cases and six deaths in the United States as of four PM on March second. There are currently no reported cases in Ohio. Risk to the general public remains low and the CDC continues to recommend Americans use typical infectious disease precautions just as those used to prevent a cold or flu, such as wash hands often with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer if soap and water are not available. Avoid touching your mouth, nose or eyes. Cover coughs and sneezes with your arm. Avoid exposure to others who are sick and stay home if you are ill. The Health Department is in close contact with our community partners to share information and be prepared should the need arise to respond to any public health threat. The City of Picwu website has been updated with a folder for the information related to the coronavirus. It has links to the CDC, to the Ohio Department of Health and the World Health Organization. Citizens are encouraged to check these sources often to stay up to date. Also, any future updates that may impact local Picwu residents will be posted on the city website and our social media platforms. So we would just encourage everyone to stay in touch, especially the CDC, on the issue. Thank you. That's all I have.
All righty. Thank you. Commissioner.
Just a few things to mention. One, this is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Riverside had an open house on Monday and just wanted to make that aware for our community that this is the month that we acknowledge that. And I do give thanks for all that Riverside and Miami County Board of Developmental Disabilities do for those citizens that work here and, and live here in our community. And their mission is, I just want to read this because I think it's important for us to keep this in mind. Our, their mission is to empower people with developmental disabilities to live, work and play as full members of our community. And we are fortunate to have more than sixty years of unwavering support from the Miami County community. So we do celebrate with Riverside and the Miami County Board of Developmental Disabilities this month especially. Also, just so you know, the High School Musical, I've seen some little bits of it, is, is about to happen, March eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth. It is Tarzan this year and you can go on to the Picwu City website, Picwu City School website to, they are reserved seats to get your tickets or you can go out to the high school. But I encourage you, it's going to be fabulous this year. Tarzan, what a great fun thing for the kids to do and it will be a wonderful night of entertainment as it always is at Picwu High School. Also, believe it or not, we had a little warmer weather today. The sun was shining, so we are moving towards spring and summer, which means we are getting out to be a lot more active. Bike Picwu, as, which has done this for quite a few years, are having their social, their membership social on April second at three-eleven. So look for more information if you want to get involved in Bike Picwu, the advocacy group here in our community. So that's all I have.
Is something going on with Down the River, Down the Beer, Down Beer at three-eleven as well?
No, that's a, that's a private, that's a, that's a, it's a fundraiser.
Fundraiser.
Yeah. It's, well, well, it's a, it's a beer tasting to support the Picwu Education Foundation. So, yeah.
I'm all for that. All right. Commissioner Chris.
So I wanted to read a Facebook post that was shared with us and I thought it was great. The title started out with, well, y'all, the trash guys are at it again. And it goes on to say, my boys stood at the window waiting and waiting and waiting for the trash guys. And as soon as trash guys saw my boys, it was a game of who can get the last wave. Smiley face, smiley face. My boys wait literally all week for this opportunity. I will say we had some guys that don't wave back at my boys and that's fine. But those trash guys that do wave back seriously make my boys' day every week. Heck, sometimes it even makes their entire week. Trash guys literally get talked about in a negative way, so much in the city and they are humans just like us. Sometimes mistakes are made and that's fine. And then sometimes you get the ones that go above and beyond, even if it's just to wave at some kids and they don't get thanked or recognized for it. Seriously, it's a little thing sometimes. So to those two trash guys that take a couple extra seconds in their day, sometimes it's longer, my kids are having who can get the last wave contest. I thank you so, so much for it. Please keep up your hard work. We appreciate you. The reason why I brought this up is because I was talking to my wife about it and I didn't know, apparently, they play this game with my son. And so I guess he jumps up and downs and they'll actually dance in the street sometimes for him. I just thought that was great. So much that every time a large truck, Amazon, UPS, or any of them starts to come down the street, he's running to the window thinking it's the trash guys. I just see that a lot through the city. I know, Amy, you were talking about working with the youth. Those things are amazing. And then, Elisa, working with the food bank and trying to support the, the people that are in need. Jay and Bill, I know you guys try to voice your, the citizens' concerns and as well Natalie. I mean, you did a lot for HGTV, but there's so much that's going through the city from our Parks District, District, working with the pools. And I know it may be corny, but I always love the saying, you know, the difference between ordinary and extraordinary. Is that a little extra? And that's something that I see through our citizens. I just wanted to commend that.
That's great. I totally agree with you. And when I see the trash people pull up, I have cameras on the back of my garage. So when they pull up, I can talk. And so I, I always say thank you if I'm there and I can see them through my phone. It's really great. You know, they're looking around like, where's that coming from? We do appreciate the hard work that they do. And thanks for reading that. I appreciate it. Commissioner Pearson.
The only thing I had was I, I did get two phone calls about our little workshop about the pool. And I will say that they were all very happy that we did have that workshop. And the outcome of it is that we're moving on and to stay tuned. And that, look around, there's so much going on. And I encourage you all to stay involved and let us know your feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been quite busy the last couple of weeks, lots of meetings to go to. I appreciate everybody's participation in the work session for the pool. The next step is we're going to send an RFQ, a request for qualifications for architects so that we can get some ideas in here of what a pool, what a pool with the splash pad, what a pool, the same pool that we have fixed up as, as, as opposed to spending a whole bunch of money and building a brand-new one would cost. A combination so that we could see all the different variations. And, and we won't have another meeting until we can get the architect and some designs. And we're also checking other cities and seeing what they're doing so that gives us ideas so that we can come together again. So your participation, citizens' participation in that whole process is very vital and we appreciate that. And everybody that came forward tonight, you are very, very appreciated in, in your thoughts. Amy, you go, girl. Amy Hickey, we're behind you a hundred percent. And the food bank, I think I'll, I'll probably come out and, and help. I think that'd be great. I wrote the date down. I'm going to put it in my calendar. As long as I don't have anything else going on, I'd like to come out and check that out. I think that's great. And Jay, keep on, keep on keeping on. I see, I see. And Bill, keep us posted as to what you're doing as well. We appreciate that as well. I don't have anything. I appreciate the city manager's update on the coronavirus. I sit and watch the updates from the federal government and the CDC. And I'm urging everybody to do the same. Keep yourself informed and involved and, and aware of what's going on. And I'd like to thank Chris Smeazing for all the hard work that he's been doing. There's a lot of things going on. And if you don't toot your horn about what it is that you're doing, and that's why I request these updates, let people know that what's going on with the city because there is some progress being made. Otherwise, people will think nothing's going on and there is. So if you could summarize all, that whole long thing that you just, we just went through, put it on the website and let everybody know, these are the things that are going on. I think people will, will be amazed that there's some, there's some activity in business and, and things going on in the City of Picwu. And with that said, I, I don't have, oh, please go to the musical, Picwu, Picwu High School Musical. It looked interesting to me, kind of scared me that they were doing Tarzan. Brought back flashbacks from my youth, sitting on Saturday afternoons, watching Tarzan on TV with my, my family. But that's not a bad thing. It was a good thing. So I can imagine it'll be a very good performance. So if you've got time and, and can reserve the tickets, go. It's a good thing. And with that, I've got nothing else. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Move and second it. We are, we are adjourned.